Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:00 PM and time to begin our planning commission for this month. Our first item is the invocation, if you'll stand and join me, and stay standing for the flag salute led by Commissioner Hatley.
Our Heavenly Father, we come before you humbly tonight, asking your blessing on this meeting and the activities here in Yukon. We ask that you lay your hand and your protection on our men and women of the military as they fight around the world and protect us around the world. Lord, lay your blessings on the city of Yukon, the state of Oklahoma, and our nation. Keep us safe as we go forward. Bless these things in thy name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Throw call, please.
Chairman Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hatley.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Item one is approval of the minutes of the December fourteenth meeting. Do we have a motion, or is there any corrections or additions?
Mr. Chair, I move we adopt the minutes as read.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes. Item two is visitor's section. If there's anyone here that would like to address the commission about a non-agended item, now would be the time to do so. Seeing none, we will proceed. Item three is to hear a request by Mohammed Khan, S.M.N. Consulting Engineers, for a curb cut driveway on the northwest Tenth and Cornwell, better known as the ONQ Filling Station at 1,000 North Check Hall Road. Is there someone here on that item? Introduce yourself and...
I'm Mohammed Khan with S.M.C. Consulting Engineers, eight fifteen West Men, Oklahoma City.
Okay.
And appreciate that you allowing us to present this request to you. Well, I'm the engineer for the project, and I have with me Michael Hoffner, who is the traffic engineering consultant, performed the roadway study for the future widening. I appreciate all the help Mitchell and Kathy has provided throughout us, and we request your approval of this driveway cut. There is just one item we would like you to consider. It's about the future roadway plans and the need for any rightaways. The current rightaway of northwest Tenth Street is approximately 120 feet wide, and the south half is 60 feet. And based on the traffic history performed by Michael Hoffner with TEC, it shows that the current rightaway would be adequate for any future widening, addition of any left turn lanes, as well as the exclusive right turn lane. And the purpose of us requesting all of the future improvements to be confined in the current rightaway is because we have our landscaping and some parking area inside our property which may fall within the additional 10 feet of rightaway which is requested in the staff report. So at this time, I would like to request the approval of those driveways, as well as if you would consider having all the proposed roadway improvement can be worked within the current rightaway.
So you're asking for the curb cut on Tenth Street, or is it the one on Cornwell? I mean, on, yes.
On Tenth Street, yeah. So basically, there are two existing driveways to the site. As part of our request, we will be closing those two existing driveways and shift the construction of the new driveways further east away from the intersection. And the purpose for doing that way is to improve the traffic condition.
Yeah, I wondered when I... Only thing I'm unhappy about is that it's in Oklahoma City instead of Yukon, but be that as it may. I was wondering, there's such a traffic lineup at various times of the day, I was wondering how you were going to do left turn out to go west out of the filling station. I could see where going east would be no problem. And then, is this cut up on, up by the bridge, is that going to go in now or later?
On Check Hall, just south of Tenth Street. It's part of this project.
It's...
Right.
So they'll be able to turn left onto, you'll practically be turning left onto the bridge there, correct?
Right. And then, the location we have set in a way to allow maximum separation from the Tenth Street, as well as separation from the bridge, to make sure that there is adequate side distance available for any vehicles on the driveways to make left or right turn on Check Hall.
Because on Cornwell there, they back up onto the bridge sometimes on trying to go forward. I mean, double lane, I don't see how you're going to have a turn across traffic. I mean, possibly, I guess your engineer has studied this, but I just...
Well, and it comes down to the habit customers will adopt over the period. Once they realize that certain time of the days, certain movements are not possible, or increase their waiting time of the driveway before they merge into existing traffic, they'll adopt those habits and then use those driveways in only time when there is not a traffic congestion on existing traffic. Most of our traffic comes from the existing traffic system. We are not destination user, not like Walmart, Target, where people plan to come to our site. We attract the pass-by traffic, and that's why most of our customers are very well familiar with the surrounding whenever they come and visit.
I just have one other question. Is the oil tank batteries going to stay there, or are they decommissioned and removed, or what?
There are two gas companies who operate those oil wells and tanking the storage batteries. One of the company is One Oak. They are in the process of looking at this location, see if they can abandon that. The other company is Midstream Enable. They have an active line.
Okay. Other commissioners have questions?
So you just, yeah, the two on Tenth Street, that left turn on, onto Tenth Street is about as far as they can get it from the light. So that, you know, I don't see an issue with that. You've got to get it somehow. I'm also concerned about the left turn onto Tenth Street. I mean, on to Check Hall.
The one on Check Hall, for point of interest, is actually located in Oklahoma City limits.
So we have nothing to say about it?
No, you have nothing. And actually, Oklahoma City, the city has approved at the engineering department, so they do have approvals from Oklahoma City.
Okay.
As you would see in the plan, and just to kind of, we tried to make it better by moving it away from the intersection there. That's why you will see a reverse curve on that driveway.
Well, I'd like to have a fast food concession out there, because those people are going to be sitting there for about 45 minutes waiting to make that left-hand turn. That's what a going record I'd like to have.
One of the reasons that Robbie Williams, the city engineer, has requested additional 10 feet, there is a time that this intersection is going to have to be improved. They're talking about a right-hand turn, as well as a dual left-hand turn on this intersection going to the west. So...
You mean from Check Hall going west on Tenth?
Mm-hmm. Going south, I mean. Going Tenth Street, going south, a dual left turn. And I think the traffic's almost there now, according to the study.
Yeah, it's terrible.
At certain times, so...
There it is.
The city engineer, or Joe Davis, is approaching Oklahoma City to discuss the possibilities of future work on this intersection. It'd be several years down the road more likely, because it's going to be quite an investment to improve it, but you'll see some additional...
Would that be Oklahoma City's funding, or...
That is one of the things that Joe Davis is working on, to see what and how much Oklahoma City's going to participate in this project.
So we have nothing to say about the road onto Check Hall, so...
Right.
Is there any, any other questions? Mr. Davis, or?
No, I, no, there's no questions.
Would someone care to read draft motion?
I'll read the motion. In the case of the request submitted by S.M.C. Engineering Mohammed Khan to install two new curb cuts along northwest Tenth, we have read the staff report and received testimony at a public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff finding, findings including all plans and attachments cited in the staff reports. I move that this item be approved with the following conditions. On Q, dedicate 10 feet of additional rightaway along interstate, along northwest Tenth Street.
Mitchell, who would they dedicate that to?
Well, that's one of the things he's asked you...
Yeah, he's actually asking us to remove that condition.
I don't know if you want to remove that, but you might want to put that back into the city engineer's purview. Let him review it and work with Mr. Mohammed to come up with a solution that works. Or you go ahead and do the motions, whichever way. But he's asking for an exception from that. Either you require it, or let it be Robbie, and they'll review your approval.
What do you have to say on it, planner? Anything?
No, we would just have to go with Robbie's judgment on that.
And so this came from our city engineer?
It actually come from Robbie, requiring additional 10 feet.
And that's for a future double left-hand turn possibly?
That's for future improvements, which has not been determined yet, and that's one of the concerns or questions is being posed to you.
And if I may, if, since there are no current plans to see what kind of infrastructure may go there, but in the future, we are open to the idea of working with the engineering consultant to see if there's a need for it. We would prefer that this year, if there is a need for any 10-foot for the improvement of road, we would prefer that to be considered as an easement that allows us to at least use that area for landscaping, and the roadway infrastructure can go below ground such as a storm drainage water line. So, yeah, we'll be, and that was one of the option your engineer has proposed. Either it could be a 10-foot of rightaway, or it could be a 10-foot wide drainage or utility easement. So we'd like you to consider us dedicating as an easement, rather as rightaway.
They can still do landscaping in the rightaway?
With a revocable permit, that's correct.
Okay. And if that would be acceptable, then, yeah, we'll be open to it.
Yeah, they can do a revocable permit and be allowed to put landscaping in there.
Would that be our call on the revocable permit?
Yes, it would be, because we're, yes.
And so this, so are we saying that he wants to change this as a, to an easement? We can't change it here, can we?
Robbie wants a rightaway. I think it's a question of terminology, but if he's okay with a revocable permit, yes, we can do a revocable permit to put landscaping in the rightaway.
So is that all right with you, sir?
Yeah, we'll be fine with it, yeah.
Okay.
So we just have to change the condition, it's listed there, right?
No, I, no, wouldn't have to change anything.
No? They wouldn't have to change anything.
Get the rightaway while we can.
Yeah, as long as the...
It's in the record on tape now that the city would do a revocable permit for landscaping.
Exactly, right, yeah. That'd be fine.
Okay. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, that we approve the request and the one condition as a dedicated rightaway, and the city would allow landscaping, the city of Yukon would allow landscaping with a revocable permit. Is there any other additions, or any comments, or anything from the, anybody from the audience that'd like to say anything about this? Seeing none, call a roll.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Item four, to hear a request by Frisco Land and Property LLC, Randy Thomas, for a preliminary plat on a strip of ground that is known as 1700 West Vandymit, Yukon, Oklahoma. Is that satisfactory, Mr.?
That sounds good, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we took this, discussed this at our last meeting. We're going to do a preliminary and the final tonight. Go ahead, sir.
My name is D.W. Convers. I represent the applicant with Convers Service Engineering, 3702 Lone Tree Drive, Edmond, Oklahoma. I've prepared a report. I'm in agreement to preliminary plat. I think we've made the changes that were requested last time to bring in the compliance of staff's agreement. I'd ask Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, if you...
Okay. Mitchell, everything's been taken care of from the last meeting?
This is a couple of questions they had on there that the planner had, so you might refer them to the planner. But the distances were not marked on the final plat, I did not remember seeing that. Is that not correct?
That's, that's correct. We didn't see the distances on there, and just from a, I guess, protocol standpoint, and what we've reviewed in the past, it's not common for a developer's name to be the title of the plat, so we just recommended changing it to something similar to Frisco Edition Number One, but that's your call.
What are you calling it? What's your name for it?
Pardon?
Your name for the plat. Did you name it, or?
The owner did. He called it Frisco Land LLC Number One. I'm not looking at the plat, so I don't know, but he just, he just said that's what he wanted to call it. I said, "Okay, fine, I'll put it on there." It wasn't, you know, I didn't see any reason why it couldn't be, but if you're taking exception to it, we can...
Name it.
Yeah, we can rename it, we'd be delighted.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we do want the name changed.
Okay.
Or the subdivision name.
So we, this is the name that you want it changed to, is that correct?
That was an option that would be more consistent with what a plat is typically called.
Okay.
We're in agreement then? We're in agreement with staff.
And then, the distances will have to be notated on the final plat prior to it going to council. I mean, we don't normally do these on the same night, just for this reason.
Good. I'm questioning what, this is, I mean, I've never had any conversation until tonight, so that's why I'm kind of questioning what you're asking there, Mr. Planner.
Oh.
What item are you talking, what item are you looking at?
It is comment number two on the recommendations.
The reason he wants it on there is because of our ordinance, if we, our driveway spacing, so he wants to be specific where they're at, or its limits of no access all the way to that one driveway access point, and I don't think they want to do that.
There's only going to be one, one access into this property, it's existing access. There won't be any more, that's just, there's just one driveway.
Yeah, he wants it noted on the plats, what the planner's saying.
Okay, I'll do that. I mean, I didn't understand what the request was, I'm sorry. One access point, the rest of it's limits of no access.
So do we need to say, rename this verbiage on here as a recommendation, or as a...
If there's only one, the distance wouldn't necessarily be, need to be notated, but I'd refer to Mitchell, do we need to put that there will only be one drive on the...
It needs to be shown on the plats.
So I'm talking about the language on here. The distance between existing drives should be notated on the preliminary and final plat. So that's plural, and he's saying there's only one, so...
There's currently one. What Cindy thought there may be an additional one, or it looks like when you look at it, ODOT had another one on the far end, where they used to come into the yard to get salt.
So we should change this to say there will only be one drive?
As shown on the plat.
As shown on the plat.
Okay, yeah, that, okay, now, that's where it's coming from, because that far end there, it didn't look like it, I don't think it's a curb cut there. They drove in there, just, they just drove in there, but there was no curb cut there. So I, that's, that explains my concern, because I kept thinking, what are you guys talking about? So, my bad.
Yeah, all I got to do is pick up the phone, call this guy, because he'll, he'll line that stuff out for you.
Your staff has been fine.
Okay.
So there is only going to be one entrance on the site.
All right.
We can put that on the plat.
Okay.
Rest of it will be limited to no access.
Are you satisfied, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Is there further questions from the commissioners about this item? If none, would someone care to read the...
Yeah, I'll read it.
Okay. Yeah.
I'll just read yours. I didn't write it down. Changing the words.
Didn't read my scratch?
Yeah, I'll work at it.
So in the case of the application for a preliminary plat for the Frisco Land and Properties LLC, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with all plans and attachments cited in the staff report. I move that this item be recommended for approval with the following conditions. The plat should be given a name that is more consistent with typical plat names. A suggestion for the name is Frisco Edition Number One. The name should be changed before the final plat is heard at city council.
And that there will be only one drive on this plat, and it needs to be noted on the final plat.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Call a roll, please.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
And the final plat, the next item is the final plat, which is the companion piece with this one we just passed at 5.05 acres at 1700 West Vandymit, Yukon. It'll be the same draft motion. Someone, you want to read that one, Ed, too?
Sure.
In the case of the application for a final plat for the Frisco Land and Properties LLC, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with all plans and attachments cited in the staff report. I move that this item be recommended for approval with the following conditions, the two conditions that were on the, for the preliminary plat.
Is that, I would go ahead and say it, if you don't mind.
The plat should be given a name that is more consistent with typical plat names. A suggestion for the name is the Frisco Edition Number One. The name should be changed before the final plat is heard at city council. Number two, that there will be only one drive, and it should be noted on the final plat.
Good. Any other comments, questions, or discussion? Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Baker.
I'm sorry, did you have one?
We do not have a second.
We need a second. Ah, I need a second.
I would, I would like to make kind of a legal point, kind of sticker with me, instead it should be changed before the council, but shall be changed before the council.
Shall be changed, all right. Thank you.
So that's for condition two, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Now, any other discussion?
I should ask a question? So you actually want me, you want me to physically show, just for staff, do you want me physically show the existing location of that drive on the final plat? Or do you want me to put a statement, and say there's going to be one?
No. Mitchell will want it, the location is notated.
He wants one access point, if that's the way that's being done. It'll be notated on that plat, at that location.
Okay, at the location of the, okay? Not a problem, I got it. Thank you.
Okay, Kathy.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners, thank you, staff. I'm sorry about the drive communication, because I never would have guessed that something that was illegal would ever be something we've been letting go through, so that's why I didn't see it, understand the other drive.
We just get that corrected before the council meeting?
Hey, no problem, I'll have to get them all. Thank you very much.
Okay. Item six is new business?
We have no new business, but we have something for open discussion.
Okay. We're ready for open discussion.
You have it in your packet for Prairie West Development, a charrette that's going to happen this month. If you would look at it very closely, a time that you guys would like to look at for January 21st on Thursday, or January 22nd, from lunch on. If you guys want to do a lunch, we can do that, or if you want to do one of the times after, Thursday afternoon or Friday afternoon, it's, because we'll need it posted agenda, because we'll want to have everybody there that can be there.
Well, I cannot be there on Friday. I'll be out of town at that time, so I could...
They said they would buy you a lunch if you wanted to go on Thursday, if that worked, or Thursday afternoon. So if you want to look at and get with Kathy, so we can get it on the agenda.
Are we all to meet at the same time, or can some go on Friday?
Well, we'd like to kind of have you together if we can.
Okay.
Because of questions...
How late will it run?
Huh? How late will it run on the 21st? I think it's one of those deals, we can do it for an hour, or we can do a little bit longer, because the charrette's kind of one of those study-type deals where you give input. But I think you're wanting to keep it around an hour, hour and a half, maybe?
Yeah, we're very flexible in setting up these times. The boxes you see on there are just placeholders. We just, we're trying to encourage as much participation as possible, and the idea was to have the planning commission come in and sit down with the development team all at one time, but you certainly can participate individually at any other time during the three or four-day period. We just want to make sure that if, if the majority of the planning commission members are there, that we have a meeting posted, so that's the concept.
Yeah, Thursday's fine with me. Thursday's fine with me if, would we start around 11?
We can.
Yeah, I mean, I have to, I have an obligation at 2:00.
Okay. You just, you just give me the time and we'll set it up.
What about you?
Thursday's good for me.
Yeah, I can do Thursday.
Is 11, 11 each okay?
Sure.
We'll just, we'll do that, 11 to 12:30, and that way you can...
Would it be in this building, or where?
No, it will be at the Fairfield Inn, their meeting room there, their, their meeting space, it can accommodate about 90 people.
If you look at the bottom, it's on the bottom, but since we know what time you're going to show up, we'll post an agenda, and we'll actually give you a, a agenda that is approved by the attorney for open discussion, since we're going to have a quorum, or possible quorum.
Okay.
And I do, I do have one other handout if I could.
All right.
We've been talking about what type of development we're thinking of and trying to plan for with Prairie West, and the architect, the team that's been hired, did a project in Lafayette, Louisiana called River Ranch, and I have the master plan.
Just for a point, there is no Lafayette, Louisiana, there's a Lafayette, Louisiana.
No, that's the New England way. This is a, this, this project, the architect, the developer worked on for almost 18 years, it's twice the size of the 180 acres at Prairie West, but it's a smart growth, mixed-use development, and I had the opportunity to tour it a couple of months ago, and it is very impressive. We have some pictures, if you'd like to see some pictures, I'm sure they'll have pictures.
What's the name of it?
River Ranch. They have a website, you can go to their website, and there's all kinds of information material at their website. The architect is Architect Southwest, and I think we included in your packet his resume, and you can see that he's been doing developments all over the state of Louisiana, anywhere from 50 to 500 acres. So he is very knowledgeable. Sold on mixed-use development, and I even brought a magazine tonight from Governing Magazine, which I get, and there's a full-page ad by AARP, and they're promoting mixed-use walkable neighborhoods.
and there's a full page ad by A A R P, and they're promoting mixed use walkable neighborhoods. So even A A R P's getting into the, the development business, so.
How close to the smart code concept that we were talking about is, is this? Pretty close?
It's very close. Now, their, their development is twice as, the River Ranch is twice the size, so they have, if you, if you look the rounded corner, the blue shaded area, that's primarily residential, but from the, from the water feature back, that's mixed use. And they have office buildings, townhouses, condominiums, retail, very nice development. We'll post an agenda, we'll be there, but we'll make sure the attorney approves.
All right.
Thank you very much. Open discussion.
All right. Further open discussion. Wanna thank the city crews for the hard work they did on clearing the tree limbs and stuff. It's, of course, it's not quite done yet, but what a massive undertaking. With that being said, is there other open discussion? Staff have anything over here?
Yes, sir.
Then, I'm sorry, I didn't look at the next meeting. When's the next meeting? This meeting's adjourned until our next meeting, which will be February eighth.